Okay, it's seven o'clock. We have a motion to open up the hearings for tonight.
Um, there's a motion to open.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first one is a continuation. Applicant Michael Wade requesting a special permit modification under section 4.3.5.1 of the zoning bylaws. And we have two applications here. The one who was requesting a special permit under 4.3.5.1 for 15% excess of the impervious in the Aquifer District. At this point, I'm going to recuse myself, and Marsha, you'll take it over here.
Is the applicant here?
Applicants present: Lawrence Broder, representing the applicant Papa Gallo LLC, and Michael Wade, the manager. At our last meeting on May 16th, we presented the two special permit petitions on behalf of Papa Gallo. The first petition requested a modification of a previously granted special permit under the Aquifer and Watershed Protection Bylaw, which allowed the 442 Washington Street site to be 55.5% impervious. The present special permit was granted in March 18th, 2010. We have requested an increase to 63.8%. The present occupant of that property is Northeast Great Dane, and the property is in a general industrial district in Aquifer Two Zone. If granted, the special permit would allow additional paving for parking and turning the area and driveway area between 440 and 442 Washington Street parcels. The second petition requested a special permit under the Aquifer and Watershed Protection provisions of the zoning bylaw to render 440 Washington Street more than 15% impervious. 440 Washington Street is a 2.1 acre parcel in the GI and Aquifer Two District. The petitioner is constructing a 20,000 square foot industrial building. The request is to allow 63.5% of the site to be rendered impervious. We presented the petition at the last hearing, which addresses all the required elements for the granting of the special permit, and reviewed the site plan. We did not finish the hearing because, one, the Graves Engineering peer review report was not completed, and there were issues raised by an abutter concerning the discharging of water from the Papa Gallo site onto his property. Since the meeting with this board on May 16th, the following have occurred. The peer report, peer review report has been completed. In summary, the Graves Engineering report says that the design submitted to the board complies with all applicable Auburn zoning bylaws, Mass. Department of Environmental Protection, stormwater management policies, and standard engineering practices. On June 11th, 2013, the planning board approved the site plan application, which is the same plan sitting before you. Thirdly, and Nick can speak for himself, but thirdly, the code enforcement officer has visited the site, reviewed the approved drainage plans for 444 and 442 Washington Street, and reviewed the proposed plan for 440 Washington Street. His conclusion is stated in the memo he provided to you, is that the onsite stormwater system functions as the approved design intended. There are some maintenance requirements that are addressed in Nick's memo, which Mr. Wade will be addressing. There's also a comment concerning plantings along the riverfront, which Mr. Wade has already begun and will be undertaking with the Conservation Commission, because the rooted trees that were there seem to be a better alternative to leave than to uproot and destabilize the bank. But he'll, he's going to address that with the Conservation Commission. Given the submittal of these reports and the conclusion that the drainage system meets the town requirements, meets stormwater management regulations, and standard engineering practices, we're requesting respectfully that the board grant the two special permits.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, on the Graves peer review, um, is 442 incorporated in that report? I thought they were doing a peer review on both properties.
The 440, go ahead.
Good evening, Carl. It's Quinn Engineering. The, the plan that was submitted incorporates the work that's going to be done on both properties. So Graves Engineering reviewed that plan. The stormwater report that was submitted also incorporates the work on both properties.
Okay.
So the memo says 440 Washington Street, but the review that was done is one plan, one hydro report that includes both properties.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything further, other than to ask for the board to grant the permits.
Okay, so I guess, um, if Mr. Wade wants to address these concern that the building inspector found on the site, or?
Mr. Wade has, we've talked with Mr. Wade. The, the issues concerning reports on maintenance and regular maintenance will be, he will, he is committed to, to address those. The issue concerning the planting along the riverfront has been a little bit, it has been an issue for a little bit, for some time now. The plantings plan that was submitted and that was approved called for removal of all existing trees. There are some trees that are mature, that have deep root systems, that are more stable in that bank area than would be, that if you pulled them out, you destabilized the bank area rather than stabilize it. And his desire is to review that, and he's already opened up communications with the concert, with the town, to discuss leaving the existing trees in and modifying that planting plan so he has a more stable bank.
So it's just in the beginning process, right?
Yep, yes, it is. Yep, it is.
Uh, Nick, did you have anything to?
I was gonna say, and as part of my comments, you know, or some of the items in here, actually most of these items in here are, are somewhat significant for, for them to be corrected. That's why in my memo, I made a, made a recommendation to the planning board that they put in as a condition of their approval, that it be contingent upon a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
And I put in there any certificate of occupancy. So we, we need to see substantial completions of these items prior to even attempt seal being issued.
Right.
So at that point, I believe that that satisfies what we're looking for as far as fulfillment of the previous plans and order of conditions. You know, I, because if we get to the point where he's ready to move into the building, and these items haven't been satisfied, then he won't be able to use the building. So.
Well, wasn't it a point that these were not taken care of when they were conditioned before?
Yes. However, the, with that being said, the previous zoning officer was, did not make a point to enforce the conditions.
Okay.
So I don't believe it's fair to Mr. Wade to, to come up and say, well, now that we've let it lapse for four years, and you weren't held to the fire to put these in, that now you need to comply with it in, you know, 10 days. Because there is a significant amount of work that needs to be done here to comply with these orders. So I think that now that we're visiting this again, and it's be, and it's become an issue, we are going to make him correct it, but we need to give him, you know, a decent amount of time to do it.
Right.
It's not, it's not something, like I said, with, with these plantings, when I looked at that, the, the required plantings are in the neighborhood of $120,000 worth of plantings. That's, that's a lot of landscaping to put in. It's a lot of money to come up with at one time. Yes, was it supposed to be done with the previous plan? Should he have been made to follow that plan? He did. However, the previous code enforcement officer did not enforce it. So to say, you know, ah, we overlooked it, now you have to come up with it right away, is a little bit unfair. So we are making him do it, but we have to give him a timeframe so that he can come up with it and address it properly.
Okay, what about these four, the four items, the catch basins, and, I mean, is that something that can be done right now, or?
Yes, those, those are, those are certain items that can be done probably within the next 30 days. You need to, you need to get a company to come in, but that's, that's relatively easy. That's just having a, a cleaning company come in and suck out the sediment in the stormwater basins and certify that, that they're clear. As, as one of the conditions, if the board decides to approve it, we can put a condition in that says that instead of prior to a certificate of occupancy, we can say in the next 30 days, we want to have the catch basins pumped in a certificate letter.
Right, so these four items?
Uh, no, not, not, uh, let me take a look here. Yes, these four items can be done within 30 days.
Right, relatively easy.
Yes, yeah, they're, they're, they're not.
Here at a time.
They're not too significant.
Okay.
And I was gonna say, typically, the one and two are part of our standard Aquifer conditions. And like I said, I was giving Mr. Wade a little bit of time here, because these are standard conditions that have been put on for all Aquifer permits.
Yeah.
Nobody that has received these conditions has been made to comply with these conditions. So that's, so that's what I am starting to do. I'm trying to follow up with everybody that's received these conditions, so that we can actually make them accountable.
Um, how long would it take to get him to comply with this? How much time are you going to give him to do that?
Well, no, that's what I said. If, if the board chooses to grant this, we can say, have it done within 30 days. The, I believe that these.
These four items.
I believe that those four items can be done within 30 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, um, the cross easement.
What's that?
The cross ass, access easement, is that already been?
Yes, it's part of the condition of the planning board's site plan approval.
Okay.
Yes.
Could it be a part of ours, too?
No, that's, that's more of a, that's a planning issue, because that relates to the site.
All right, so that's all set, then?
Yeah, yep.
Any questions, or?
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to, um, make a statement that I was very appalled to hear, the statement that Wade may had made about this board. I don't think this board makes any jokes about anybody or any decisions that we make. We're here to follow bylaws from the town. We're not here to have certain people say, well, you're going to do this, you're going to do that. We're here for the town of Auburn, not for individuals.
I'm unfamiliar with what you're talking about.
Right, you have no part of it, he knows.
But, we're here to deal.
But it was a statement that was out of line. But other than that, it has nothing to do with the decision tonight. But there was a comment made, and I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, so do we have any abutters or abutters comments, or? Do we have any motion, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit, and then we can outline the conditions.
Okay, and specify the timeframe, and?
The 30 days on the, the four that you mentioned, that could be possibly done within the next 30 days.
Oh, just one, can I ask another question, just on that, um, that riverfront restoration? So you said that's going to take like a year, or?
Well, because, because of the significant amount of plantings, and also the time of year that it is.
Yeah.
Um, we want to make sure, with all the rain that we've had recently also, there are some site conditions that are going to be difficult to plant things. You know, obviously, if we, if we want the landscaping to be placed in there, we want it so that it's going to stay. So the reason why we want to give a timeframe for that is so that we can have the plantings put in in a proper manner, so that they're going to set and be able to grow. If, if we do it haphazardly and force it to be done quickly, there's not a guarantee that they're going to grow, and we're going to end up with a bunch of dead trees. So I'd rather have him have a decent timeframe so that he can put it in, and that the planters are going to stick. Also, also with what was mentioned is that, in the original plan, there, there was more existing vegetation that was supposed to be removed. That wasn't. So, um, there's actually a modification. If, if Mr. Wade decides to choose to, he can actually make a modification to the amount of required plantings, because some of the required plantings on the plan can't be put in, because there's existing vegetation still there. So I believe that he's working with the Conservation Board and the, and the planning board to modify what's required in that area to meet the zoning requirements.
Now, has the planning board put on that condition of, that this has to be completed, or no occupancy permit will be issued? Has that been?
I don't believe the planning board's granted an approval yet.
No, this board's free to do that if they wish.
We can do that?
Okay. Has, can, has the planning board granted an approval for the project yet?
Yes.
They did?
Subject to the ZBA's action.
Okay.
All right, so, so if they have not granted it, then we can, we can put that condition on, then?
All right.
And I believe, didn't Nick also mention tie it into the occupancy permit?
Right, that's what we were just talking about, yeah? So, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second. With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Could you go back with the conditions again, because I, we kind of went around.
Okay, so the four.
The four, I understand the four item.
Okay, so within 30 days, and, um, all the plantings would be completed and satisfactory to plans, I guess, the.
Yeah, I.
Site plan, or?
Yeah.
Um, or no certificate of occupancy will be issued till that's complete.
So should we put a, a time on it? Six months, a year? I mean, we don't want to go another four years down the road and be where we are today.
Um, I believe that, that Mr. Wade has the intention of building this, this building relatively soon. If we want to, if we want to put a condition on there, we can say prior to a certificate of occupancy being put in, or within eight, because I know that he's looking at modifying the plant, so it's going to take time to go through the conservation planning, so we can say within 18 months of the decision being recorded.
Okay.
That way, he's got six months to go through whatever he needs to go through, and then, because if he gets the approval in December.
Right, exactly.
You know, we want to be able to give him time to get into a good planting season.
Yeah, I was gonna say another 18 months. I can't agree to that. I can't.
Oh, the board's free to, the board's free to modify that as it is. That's, that's a suggested timeframe, if you want to go with a shorter one, or?
Or maybe you can come, you can come back in like a year and tell us the status, or?
Um, we, we can do that. I mean, it's, like I said, this, this is a decision that the board has to make. I, I gave.
We're on four years already, when, when he's not compliant.
Right.
I was gonna say, at this time, he's in the process of modifying the plan. Without having the modified plan, I can't give an actual timeframe. That's why I was tying it to a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
Because that's something that I have definite control over, as opposed to if we come back from a year from now, and he still hasn't gotten a reapproval from the Conservation District.
Exactly, then, plus, um, it's actually not his fault. It's for four years. I mean, these were never.
Well, you're supposed, still supposed to do it.
Yeah, but it was on his decision.
Right.
Still supposed to do it. They were both, I mean, it was, the town was wrong, and Mr. Wade was wrong.
You shouldn't have to.
I'm not saying either, but they were both wrong, because it was a decision that was supposed to be done. And it was a decision that was supposed to be followed up by code enforcement officer, which was not done.
Which wasn't done, right?
So I don't, I don't, I understand that.
Okay.
Right. I feel confident that Nick will follow up on the project. That's.
So are you agreeable to, like, a year, and?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it's a yes from you? What about you, Bob?
I'm a vote no.
You're voting no?
Right.
Okay, and I'm going to say yes, so four to one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So within the, within the 30 days.
Yeah, we'll do.
Yeah.
The major corrections will be done, I mean, so that's, that's, that's huge. And then the plantings and all.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, they will find out.
Okay, a motion, did you guys motion to close the meeting?
Oh, we have a motion to close.
The hearing? I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good? Okay, just for the, for the writing of this.
30 days.
Are you, I was in, trying to understand, are you conditioning it to come back in one year to review it, or?
These items are to be completed within 30 days.
Mm-hmm.
Before.
And the trees were one year?
The trees are one year.
Okay, so in other words, is the, is, are you conditioning the special permit to be reviewed in one year? I just, so you know what you're doing.
Right, yeah.
Right, in the, right.
So you're all clear? I don't know if I'm, who's going to be writing the decision, so. Okay?
Yeah, we can get Lawler to make that decision, right?
Uh, we could ask him, but you've just got to be reviewed, though.
Yeah.
Unless you feel comfortable writing it, or I, I mean, I can.
I don't care.
As an administrative procedure, I can write it, but it's up to you. Okay. Well, we still got time for the 7:30, so we'll have to wait on that one.
Two minutes?
Yep. Any problem with the minutes, other than the five to one voting?
I'm okay.
It's okay. I think, they look good.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
May.
Second.
May 16th.
Okay, oh, we got a little motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Here are the signature sheets.
Great. The trailers on there, right?
Well, he's.
Nick, you, we're, we're watching, what, the trailers?
He's watching it, yeah.
Yes. No, I, I have it. Um, that's, that's, that's a nice, that I'm dealing with, with all the car parking lots, so.
Yeah.
They're, they're all being dealt in, with in the same manner. Um, I don't want to pick one out and focus on it, but everybody's being dealt with in the same manner, and we'll be taking.
We still got five minutes here. Any, any business anyone's got to talk about here on there? Or if we wait for five minutes?
I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll take a recess here for about five minutes, and then we'll, that's where we can turn the mics off, we don't have so much dead air. Okay, we'll, motion to recess for five minutes?
I'll make a motion, then.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have motion to reopen the hearings after?
I'll make a motion to reopen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're back in business. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay, this will be the 7:30. Applicant Midstate Auto Group Inc. requesting a special permit under section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the expansion of the automotive sales, service, and repair facility with associated paving, underground recharge, site work in the Aquifer and Watershed Protection Overlay District for the property located 810 Washington Street, Auburn. Ask map 60, parcel 13. The applicant is here?
Yes.
Okay, and your name for the record?
Uh, good evening, Carl Holtgren, Quinn Engineering. This is Ray Butler.
Good evening.
The property is 810 Washington Street. You guys are familiar with the site?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's located in the HB zoning district, zone three of the Aquifer and Watershed Protection Overlay District, currently used for automotive sales. We are requesting a special permit, because we're in the Aquifer Three District, and we are expanding automotive sales, service, and repair facility. The work includes construction of a roughly 500 square foot building addition at the rear of the building. That's going to have office space and new bathroom. The addition results in no new employees. It's just to accommodate the existing employees that are on site. Lot area is about 1.4 acres. We've got a lot coverage proposed of about 79% impervious. There's municipal sewer and water services on site. We've got a, a drain system proposed, and if we step around the plan real quick. The building addition is proposed here. The new work is proposed here in the back of the building. Basically, basically parking spaces. We've got two catch basins proposed, one here and one here. Stormwater treatment unit proposed, an underground infiltration area proposed, and then a discharge at the rear of the site. We've got a review memo from Graves Engineering. One of those memo, for that memo, I've not seen the back. Trump Graves saying that everything's been acknowledged, but the comments that were in the document now, if I can pass them in a minor nature, I could do that. Just to give you an idea of what the site looks like, this is the existing parking area, here, the existing building. There's an addition that was permitted through this board, I want to say, 2012. So the parking area is in the back here. We've got a replacement wall proposed here, so this parking area relatively, relatively changed elevation. The number of parking spaces on site is, I don't care about this. We got to lay it through the number of employees, the building footprint, the number of bays on site, and then the leftover are used as display spaces. So that's how we, we come up with that number. We've got a planning board meeting coming next week. This next week, we've not been.
So you haven't had anything back from Graves?
You had the original comment letter?
Yeah, we have that also, from dated June 11th, right?
Correct, and I'm not saying someone's going to do that.
Okay, but you did send some comments back?
Did, 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 I think, I think the plans that you're looking at reflect those provisions. I want to say, I want to say.
Yes, May, May.
These are, these are dated May 21st.
Yeah, we have May 21st. These, this last revised?
On the corner?
Oh, revision one, yes. Okay, so we do have revised plans. I apologize.
Okay. So that'll be, what are they dated?
These are dated 6/17/13.
17/13, so those will, you addressed those in there, but we haven't really have any read, anything further back from Graves. I'm surprised they haven't gotten back to us.
Actually, if you want to pass this, the response letter to the, the letter.
Again, if I can characterize the comments, a lot of them are technical in nature, but there's no showstopper, so it's like.
In the maneuvering aisle, is that going to be looked at through site plan, I'm hoping?
That is the site plan. That's what we, we have planning board. These are the display spaces in the back here. It's not used for employee parking, so usually the 24-foot aisle width is used for moving in and out by customers or employees, something like that. These are dedicated display spaces, so if it'd be somebody who works there moving the cars, and obviously the.
Right.
The cashier backing up, they don't want to take the cars up.
Are there any abutters for this one? No? Okay. Okay, I really don't really have too many questions on this. It's pretty straight ahead what they're going to do. Just a little addition to the building and some additional parking. They got the drainage, it beats everything we need to do. Okay, is there any motions?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Subject to anything?
No.
Do you want to make an approval of, you know, Graves?
Oh, Graves.
Yeah, because we haven't heard back from Graves. Just, you know, subject to a positive review.
Review from Graves, yeah.
From this thing, you know, on the revision. Sounds legitimate here. Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. There'll be five. Bob, you're not going to run this one, sorry, but.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you now.
Thank you.
Take a recess here.
Take a recess here. We could. Okay.
Do we need to do a motion to close this hearing?
Yeah, motion to close this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good catch. Getting good in our old days. Okay, well, we've got a few more minutes on this one. I think we might take another recess. Okay, motion to recess for about five minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, this will be the seven forty-five. Applicant Sign Design requesting a special permit under section seven point six point five of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the relocation of three signs for Honeydew on property located at nine thirteen Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass., map seventy-one, parcel twenty-one. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion to open.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is the applicant here?
Well, applicant is not here. My name is Rick Slaman. I'm a relocation agent for the Mass Department of Transportation. The sign design is a contract for the common用地.
Okay.
I do have a map here. I know he submitted an application, but just for visual. Basically, what he's requesting is a special permit to move the sign six feet back from the property line. But basically, since the width of the actual, well, the pole would be six foot back. The actual width of the signs means that the sign itself is only going to be two feet behind the property line. So that's why he was applying for a special permit to relocate the Honeydew Donuts business site.
We're just kind of make sure the relief, so he's looking to be two feet from the property line? Is that what I'm getting?
May I show you?
Sure.
So what we have here is Honeydew on the side. The pole itself would be on the side of the property, six feet behind property line. But because of the width of the sign, the sign would overhang two feet behind the property line.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If you see, the sign is here. Here, and you're bringing it over here to the side of the building. We're trying to keep it visual.
Right. I understand. So he's actually going to move it into a different location onto?
The side of the building.
Right, over there?
Yes.
Okay, so he's got some land back there that's not paved?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of the, 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 because of the.
Okay, motion. 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 Okay, motion.
Rise.
Okay, motion. 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 Okay, just so the audience out there doesn't hear the dead time, we're going to take another five minute recess here. Motion to recess for five minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this will be the eight o'clock. Applicant RHY Construction Company, Inc., requesting a special permit under section eight point two and nine point five of the Auburn zoning bylaws. The expansion of an existing administrative office facility and training center by the construction of a new building containing a second story on the property located at forty-nine Central Street, Auburn, Mass., map forty-one, parcel five. Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, Todd Broder, on behalf of the applicant, R H White Construction, would just like to briefly introduce the.
Motion to open first, before Todd, sorry, motion open?
Motion to open.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we can go, Todd, sorry. Okay.
Just briefly wanted to introduce the project team. Carl Franceschi from DRA is architect on the project, who's helped design the building. Norman Gamache from Garry and Hanlon's a civil engineer. We have several representatives from R H White Companies here tonight as well to address the board and anybody else that has a question. So we thought we'd have everybody here in case there were any questions. So architect, civil engineer, and members of the ownership team.
We had just one question before we go, so I think we might need to amend the filing, just to. Your filing under eight point two, which is for use, I think we already granted the use. I think it should be under eight point three point two, which is for the structure. Same argument for, as far as the application, but it's, this is basically for the structure. I just want to, because we already did, we did the use.
Yep, well, we did the use previously back in maybe April? Does that sound correct? You issued a special permit at that time. The concept was to reuse the, you know, essentially use a one story, use a, you know, essentially use a one story, use a, you know, essentially use a one story, you know, essentially use a one story, you know, essentially a one story, use a, you know, essentially, a one story, you know, essentially, a one sto- 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 you know, essentially, are proposed. There'll be, the parking areas will be restriped. Some landscaping, some beautification in that vein will happen. But essentially, the site would remain, it would look very similar to what it looks like today with a two-story building as opposed to the one. I did want to have Carl explain to you and show you some of the properties of the, of the building as designed. So Carl?
Can you speak to the boards here or is it the microphone?
Um, microphone, so the people at home can hear.
Do you see that?
How's that? I'm sure most of you are familiar with the property. It's just down the street, literally, here's what it looks like today as a former Knights at Columbus. Essentially, a concrete block building, one, a tall one-story building that's been modified and added on to over the years. It's approximately twenty-two feet, I think, to the ridge of the existing building now. And as was mentioned, the proposal is to rebuild, replace that structure with a new two-story structure on almost exactly the same footprint, almost to the inch where it sits on the site. And the building is a combination of office and a training center, as you previously granted. And I think you have these materials in your, in your application. You can see them here in color. Again, this is the proposed building. We haven't worked out all the details yet, but the basic character of the building, it's a two-story building with a sloped roof on it, a gable, a hip and gable roof. It really has the character of a residential building in that it, as we say, has a sloped roof, not a flat roof like a lot of commercial buildings. It has siding and window sizes and proportions, much like a residential structure. Straightforward rectangular building, a little bit of a glass lobby on one corner. Just to share with you the interior, first floor plan, second floor plan here. Again, fairly straightforward with lobby in one corner, the men's and women's rooms and stair in the center of the building, office space on front and the back. The building will be used, much like it is today in a sense, a training center. So there's a bit of a lunchroom area there to serve the employees for lunch. An open office space on two stories with some dedicated training rooms, roughly twenty-five foot square classroom-type spaces on the second floor. Effectively, it's twelve feet or so floor to floor is being proposed. So by your bylaw, it's twenty-four feet tall to the eve there. The sloped roof not only helps aesthetically, we think, but also helps hide the mechanical units that will provide the ventilation and air conditioning for the building. So essentially, in the attic space in the center there will be the rooftop units so that particularly in this site where you, you know, approach the building down the hill and are almost as high as the building is looking down on it, having that clean roof, we think, helps it fit into the neighborhood, so.
Does the board have any questions of Carl on the, on the building design? If not, I'd just like to speak to you briefly about the special permit and the standard for the grant of the special permit. As we just discussed, we're, we're looking at this under section eight point three point two. Just read you the little, little section because it's slightly different from what we had in our application, but you've got a non-conforming structure may be altered, reconstructed, extended, or structurally changed provided that such alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change conforms to all the dimensional requirements of this bylaw. And I don't think we've mentioned it yet, but this, this building will comply with the various setbacks, height, other requirement, other dimensional requirements. So in that, in that fashion alone, I think it satisfies the standard for the, for the grant of the special permit. You've got the application and the memorandum in support of the special permit, which I can go through each section of nine point three, point five, if you like.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll go with that.
It's hot in here tonight, so I figured I'd.
Yeah, thanks. I agree, it's a beautiful building. I think it fits more to the residential neighborhood. I guess my only question is no, no third, no third floor going to be.
going. I see there's a little kind of a peak in there with a little, little gables in there, nothing to be, storage, attic, okay? Are there butters for this? Sure, your name and address, please.
Rex Fuzziano, 54 Central Street.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to give the board? You did, and you're, you're okay with this? Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? Okay.
I'm making a motion.
Good building.
Very nice, yeah.
I think it's going to be a great
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion here.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations and again, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
That's going to look nice. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I would love, you know, to have a little old building. It would make me happy. Very good for the name.
Okay, any, any business that we need?
Parties and stuff.
Nick, anything new we need to know about or?
Not, not at the moment. We may see a few things coming down here, but nothing that
Yeah, any, I don't know if there's any applications come in for next month. How are we starting to
I haven't seen anything.
Slow down yet?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything yet. We do have some significant building permits, but everybody's been, been in compliance, so.
Are you going to look into that thing on the?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second? Oh, wait, we're going to close that last hearing. Motion to close that last hearing I was talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
Second?
Second, all in favor? Aye. And a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. We're done.